To call the Anacortes City Council Meeting of Tuesday, July 6, 2021 to order. Ms. Hunt, would you take the role?
Mr. Carter, Mr. Young.
Here.
Mr. Walters.
Here.
Ms. Cleland McGrath.
Here.
Ms. Moulton.
Here.
Mr. McDougal.
Here.
Mr. Miller.
Here.
Thank you.
Would you all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, good evening, and it's so nice to be back with everyone tonight in the council chambers. So, the first item on my agenda this evening is announced under announcements and community reports is Item 3A, and it's our my COVID-19 update and reopening report. As far as reopening goes here in the city of Anacortes, City Hall reopened today, normal business hours 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Monday through Friday. The senior center also reopened today, and we're having our first in council meeting. So, we are back in business. My report that I got from Skagit County on the actual statistics of COVID came last Friday, so this is a few days old. But as of July 1, Skagit County had reported 10 new cases of COVID. This brings our total to 5,334 cases, 354 hospitalization, and a total of 76 deaths in the last year and a half. Skagit County's case rate of 51.4 per 100,000 over the last 14 days and hospitalization of zero patients over the last seven days. Yesterday, or actually, it wasn't yesterday, on June 30, Washington State officials reopen business and recreation. While most sectors can't go back to business as usual, there are still some things to note. Unvaccinated people will need to continue wearing a mask indoors. The new masking guidance does not apply to healthcare facilities like hospitals, long-term care, or doctors' offices, correctional facilities, homeless shelters, or schools. In these settings, all people, regardless of vaccination status, must continue to wear a mask. Businesses can be stricter than the state and can continue to enforce masking and distancing and hand washing, whatever is appropriate in those spaces. COVID-19 vaccines help protect against severe illness of COVID-19, but vaccine breakthrough cases do occur. While COVID-19 vaccines are working well, some people who are fully vaccinated against COVID-19 will still get sick because no vaccines are 100% effective. These are called vaccine breakthrough cases. However, there's some data to suggest that vaccination may make the symptoms less severe in people who are vaccinated but still get COVID-19. Currently, according to the Washington State Department of Health in the state of Washington, we've had 2,228 vaccine breakthrough cases that have been identified, and of those cases, 78% of the symptoms had symptoms and 10% were hospitalized. Forty have died of COVID-19-related illnesses, and it's important to remember that when looking at breakthrough data that says millions of people in the United States are getting vaccinated, some breakthrough cases are expected. Here in Skagit County, we've had a total of 149,000 vaccine doses have been administered. That's roughly 63% of all Skagitonians 12 years old, 12 years old and older against COVID. The Skagit County Fairground Vaccine Clinic's last day was on June 26, and people can still access vaccines at many providers throughout the county, clinics, grocery stores, pharmacies. Go to the vaccine dot WA for a full list. The next pop-up place in the county put on by the Health Department for a vaccine will be tomorrow at Skagit Transit Station in downtown Mount Vernon from 5:00 to 9:00 p.m. And then, we also received more information from the governor about Housing Stability Bridge, and you also can look at that full announcement on the Skagit County website. And that concludes my COVID update. Is there any thoughts or questions? All right. So, the next thing on my agenda here is a Fourth of July report. So, I'm happy to report that we had an incredible celebration here in the city of Anacortes. We had a parade that half the community was in the parade and half the community was on the sidewalk. I literally have never seen so many people in our community come downtown for the parade. So, it was a really incredible celebration. We also did fireworks in the evening over the bay, and as Councilman Walters said, that it was the most amazing program we've seen in years. We think everyone went to extra effort. So, it took a village. So, if you would take a moment just to listen to me, I'm going to list all the people I know that were involved, and I know I won't mention everyone, but it took a village to pull this off, and we here at the city have taken on this role. Several years ago, we took over the parade, and we've always, we've always done the fireworks through the Parks Foundation, but here we go. John Lunsford, our Director of Parks, was really the person that made this happen throughout the city. He was on the streets probably at 7:00 a.m., and he was the last one to go home off the water after the fireworks. So, I want to commend John Lunsford for his role. Sylvia Cooper coordinated the parade. The Public Works Department set up the barriers close to, and closed down all their streets, and Will Ludeman led the cause on that. Saban Williamson, Jason Tottenson, Kenneth Hargit, and Brandon Christensen, all from the Public Works Department, showed up and made this happen and actually drove some vehicles in the parade. It was really fun to see some of our public works trucks paraded with our fire engines. Our Anacortes Department helped throughout with all our street closures. They also led the parade, and they were the first vehicle in the official vehicle in the parade, and they were the last vehicle to close the parade. The Anacortes Fire Department showed up with a multiple of shiny engines, and all of our officers showed up in full dress uniform, including our ambulance officers there, and we also had our 1923 antique fire engine, totally manned by all the volunteers and Chief Harris. Steve Orsini, who lives on Gwimus and is a member of the Anacortes Yacht Club, and Gary Robinson, who is our past director, volunteered during the week to help clear all the pleasure boats out of the area where the barge was to set off fireworks. Steve Diebler from a wastewater treatment plant, and Jim Rains worked on the barge, setting up and then, setting up and then setting off fireworks. Nicola Mitchell worked the boom truck for the town photo. She drove that truck in, she was patient, she got it up for the photograph, and then she patiently turned it off and waited for our patriotic program to end. Before then, she backed it up with all the residents around her. Victoria Wong was our technical support for our patriotic program. Not done yet. Also, we had our donors in the community. We had Culberson Marine, and Andy Culberson donated the barge for the weekend. Dunlap Towing, they provided the tug at a reduced rate to move the barge. Our very own Tiffany Mattson did all the contract works for that. The Port of Anacortes let us tie up to Pier 1. Skagit Sheriff Boat for patrolling the show perimeter and giving the crew a lift back to shore. Once again, Gary Robinson and John for making sure the show site and the boats, boats all got moved and stayed on there at all, everything was done. Dennis Norton from Western Display, he was our lead pyrotechnician, and he's been doing this show for over 50 years. So, maybe that was his 50-year celebration he provided for us, because it was incredible. Also, in addition to Steve Diebler, we also had local crew members and volunteers, Ian Diebler, Rob Fitch, and Jim Rains were on the barge. And I think, I might have reached the end of all the volunteers, so I think I did. And so, I just want to thank everyone again, and let's give them all a hand, a applause for all their good work. And I'm looking forward to next year. I, I'm just so happy that we as a community could gather again. All right. So, Item 3C is our Information and Technology Committee Report.
Mayor Gear.
Yes, Mr. McDougal.
The IT Committee met last week. Mr. Walters, Mr. Miller, myself, met with Ms. Xu and Mr. Cervantes, head of IT Department. We covered a lot of topics, so I'll just hit kind of some highlights. We've got our, our hyper-convergent server clusters up and running across four sites locally, and also, we're replicating basically backup data disaster recovery, or to disaster recovery centers in Microsoft Azure data centers. So, we've got a really robust kind of data protection disaster recovery system set up. We've just recently shut off the, the old kind of leased line, like landline voice system and, and converted over to a VoIP system. So, there's a $1,200 savings for that. The VoIP system is accessed via the city's fiber network out to the internet, and then it's controlled out there. So, those old leased lines are gone. So, that's a nice bit of savings there. Moving down the notes here, a bunch of work on email retention policy. So, basically, we've got archival and retention requirements that, that are dependent on sort of different departments and different positions, like, for instance, everything for City Council has to be archived, whereas other stuff can have like a time-based sort of lifetime. And so, they're working to essentially redo some of, or they're actually looking at options for, for how to assist them to do that full retention. And mentioned, we currently have nine million email records that, that we're keeping track of. Other items, well, they reported on the dress rehearsal for this hybrid meeting, and the dress rehearsal and the work that went into getting ready for this hybrid meeting had all gone very well. And this is just having done, you know, Zoom for the last year and a half, and having also done kind of dial into the old City Council system, this hybrid system is a big step up, and it's gonna, I think it's gonna be really nice for, for council, community, and staff. And then, some budget priorities next year, you know, we're, we're gonna, IT is gonna be asking for a number of hardware upgrades because of deferred maintenance in, in 2021. So, to keep an eye out for that. We also have police body cameras need to be operational by January of 2022. So, working with the APD on, on vendor options there, and, you know, that's gonna add a bunch of additional essentially data archival data retention requirements for IT. Anything else, any other highlights?
Okay. Thank you, Mr. McDougal. Before we get to Item 3D, I want to mention two more groups I didn't mention. The Anacortes Yacht Club provided us with buoys for the fireworks fallout zone, and the Anacortes Waterfront Alliance provided us with a boat to set up the buoys. And everyone in the community that donated to our fireworks, so individual community members and businesses donated to the fireworks to the Parks Foundation. And now, I'm done with my thinking of the, of the community for the Fourth of July celebration. So, at this time, we have Item 3D, which is the Port City Liaison Committee Report.
Mayor Gear.
Yes, Ms. Cleland McGrath.
Yeah, so, we actually had our first Port City Liaison meeting in person this morning. So, it was lovely. We had Mayor Gear there. We had Mr. Meesmer and Mr. Lunsford there, and then also representation from the port. You know, we talked a bit about the COVID updates. The big news is the port opened officially July 1, and they've had one commissioner meeting in person, and so, we're glad to catch up with them and now have our council meeting in person, and that's gone smoothly. I think the soft announcement is that they're going to get their community concert series up and running, one July 30, and then in August, Wednesdays and Fridays, skipping the Arts Festival Saturday, obviously. The other great news for our community is that the Transit Shed will be staying open through December 31, 2023. So, thank you to that. I think that's a really important part, and so, we appreciate that extra time. And then, you know, we talked a little bit about the outfall and kind of where we're, the status of that, and then also of Second Street. I think we're all kind of in agreement. We're just working out some of those little details, but the direction is, is pleasing for both sides. So, that should kind of come before us, I think, in the next month or so. And we will be skipping our August meeting, so no report. So, we'll get to enjoy that first week of August. So, that's it.
Thank you. Any comments? All right. So, at this time, we're going to Item 4, which is Public Comment. And if any one of our attendees, we don't have anyone in the council chambers tonight, but we do have people attending remotely, if you would raise your hand, I will call on you. All right. I don't see any hands up, so we'll move on now to Item 5, which is our Consent Agenda, 5A through E. Counsel, what is your pleasure?
Mayor Gear.
Mr. Miller.
I'll defer to Ms. Cleveland.
Thank you. Uh, Mayor Gear.
Ms. Cleveland.
I would like to approve the Consent Agenda items A, B, D, and E, and pull Items C, if possible.
Okay.
Second.
So, we have a motion by Ms. Cleveland McGrath, a second by Mr. Miller, to approve 5A, B, D, and E. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Okay, Ms. Cleveland McGrath, Item 5C, what is your pleasure?
I am, would just like to pull it because I am on, currently on the board for the Arts Festival, so I wanted to abstain from voting. So, that is all.
All right.
Mayor Gear.
Mr. Miller.
I move to approve Consent Agenda Item C.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Miller, a second by Mr. Young to approve 5C. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Well, this is exciting. We're gonna have an arts festival. Thank you, counsel. All right. So, now, we're gonna move on to Item 6 under Other Business, and Item 6A is Museum Advisory Board Appointment Confirmation. We lost a longtime board member, museum board member, Louis Jones. At the end of last year, Louis passed, and Brett Lunsford and Libby Walgamot, President of the Anacortes Museum Advisory Board, have brought forward the following recommendation for the appointment of Judas Zurisson to complete the unexpired term of Louis Jones. This term will expire December 31, 2022. At the end of the term, Ms. Zurisson would be eligible to serve the four-year term. So, I'm asking the council for your confirmation tonight for this appointment. So, I guess.
Mayor Gear.
Yes, Mr. Walters.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Walters, a second by Mr. Young. Ms. Hunt, would you call for the vote?
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Walters?
Yes.
Ms. Cleland McGrath?
Yes.
Ms. Moulton?
Yes.
Mr. McDougal?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries.
Thank you, Ms. Hunt. All right, we're on to the next item, Item 6B. This is a contract award for City Hall Parking Lot LID retrofit project number 21-001-STM-002. And Tim Holman is with us this evening. He's using our remote hybrid feature, and he's gonna do his presentation from his office. Welcome, Mr. Holman.
Thank you, Mayor Gear. Good evening, Mayor Gear, members of the council, and members of the public. I'm here to present to you the contract award for the City Hall Parking Lot LID retrofit project. My name's Tim Holman. I'm an engineering technician with the Public Works Department, and I'm also the project manager for the project. Real quick, I'm gonna try sharing my screen, and I want to show you a map of the project and, and kind of explain to you a little bit about what LID it means. So, let's see. Can you see the map? Can I give a thumbs up or something?
Yes, we can see it.
Perfect. So, LID, real quick, is, stands for Low Impact Development. It's a stormwater management, a plan or stormwater management methodology that kind of emphasizes infiltration and dispersion of the runoff as opposed to collection and, transmission into a pipe like we would have done historically. And so, LID is the, LID is the preferred method of, of stormwater management by the Department of Ecology, and this project is gonna implement some storm, some LID methodologies in the City Hall parking lot, both the, the parking lot to the north of City Hall and also the parking lot across Q Avenue to the east of City Hall. It's gonna provide multiple, kind of a range of, of options from the menu of LID that's available to us, and it's gonna provide a demonstration for, for developers, residents, builders that come to City Hall and are, are looking to, to develop a project. LID is, is a requirement of all new developments that trigger thresholds for, for on-site stormwater management, and so, this would be an option to actually take people out, and they say, what is LID? We can actually point to it out the window or walk them out there and say, this, this is an LID feature, and hopefully, that'll help make it a little less intimidating for people. So, real quick to show you the LID features that are implemented in this project, we're gonna put in two bioretention swales, one along the north side of the, of the north parking lot here, and then one in the northwest corner of the, of the Q Avenue parking lot, I call it. We're also going to put in some bull bouts for, to make a safer crossing between the parking lots. That's not an LID feature, but that's a safety feature, traffic safety feature, but we're also going to complete those bull bouts with pervious pavers. So, they're gonna be the same pervious pavers that already exist at the Depot Plaza, and there's also some along Ninth Street. So, they're gonna, that'll look very similar to both those locations. We have some that are left over from both those projects, so we're gonna utilize those. Also shown on this map, and it's to the south in the, it's not shown on this map, but to the south on Q Avenue parking lot, there is gonna be an engineered stormwater vault that's gonna be another kind of example of what can be done and to, in a more, you know, commercial setting to, for projects that want to go that route, that's a little more engineering intense than the bioretention swales are, but it would be another thing so we can help display that to people. We're also going to install up here along the bioretention swale in the north. We're gonna put in some electrical vehicle charging stations, and that's kind of a, a different project that's getting tacked on to this project. I know Russ Pittis has been working with some grant agencies to get a grant for that, and he said, hey, well, you're, you're tearing, ripping up the parking lot. How about we put in the foundations and the infrastructure for that, those? So, we're gonna be doing that as well to help him on that project. We're also gonna be able to clean up some of the drainage issues in the alley to the west of City Hall. There's a catch basin there that currently drains into the sanitary sewer. We're gonna connect it to the storm drain system where we have a contractor in here and, and things torn up. So, that's, so we're kind of trying to tackle a bunch of problems at once, and so, we sent the project to bid and, and had two bidders on the project. The low bid came in at $403,928.27 by a company out of a carpet called Valdez Construction. That's a little bit less than the engineer's estimate. The engineer's estimate came in right between the two, two bids, so that's kind of where we like to be, right in the middle. And so, we recommend that you approve the contract, and we'll get the project built for you, unless there's any questions.
Mayor Gear.
Yes, Mr. Walters.
Mr. Holman, we have three, four street trees around the edge of the parking lot now. Are we gonna be losing those as part of this project?
That's, that's correct. So, we're gonna lose, we're going to remove the existing street trees. They're gonna come down there, there, where the bioretention swale's going in, but an aspect of bioretention swales, part of the, the features that are included in them is planting. So, we're going to be planting some, not just trees, we're gonna be putting in some, some bushes and, and some ground cover, but we're also going to be replacing them with some trees, fairly similar number of trees within those bioretention swale areas.
Okay, so, we'll be putting them back. And are we losing any in the parking lot to the east? It wasn't easy to tell what level of modification we were gonna be making to the parking lot to the east.
Sure, yeah, to the east, there will be, I think, two or three trees within that bioretention swale as well, but once again, we'll be looking to replace those with new trees that help with the function of that bioretention swale.
And are we losing any parking as a result of this work?
No, the, the parking at, in the City Hall parking lot, the north parking lot is, is gonna be rearranged a little bit, and we're gonna change some of the ADA parking stall locations to better line them up with the door, but there's no net loss of parking stalls. I'm gonna try to maybe even gain a parking stall out on the Fifth Street because of that bull bout allows me to, to maybe add one.
Yeah, that was gonna be my next question, was whether we lose one as a result of the bull bout, but you think we might be able to add one?
I think right now, there's a parking stall that's not striped because it's so close to the stop sign, but now that I created a bull bout, I think I can sneak one in there. So, I'm gonna do, try my best to, to gain or at least not lose.
Okay. And then, finally, the installation of the charging stations, is that part of this contract or will be separate work under a separate contract?
Yeah, the actual installation of the charging stations is under a separate contract. This will just provide the infrastructure and the foundations, but there's no electrician, an electrician actually has to install the, the stations themselves. So, that'll be a separate contract.
Thank you.
Mayor Gear.
Mr. Young.
Just wanted to, just for the public as well, Mr. Walters asked a couple of the questions that I had, but I just wanted you to elaborate just to make sure that we are continuing our ADA compliance and that the goal of what we were attempting to do right here is to make sure accessibility is for everyone. I just wanted you to elaborate a little bit on that.
Yeah, actually, that's a, that's a great point. Thank you for bringing that up. So, the, the ADA at both corners of Fifth and Q are, let's say, built to an older standard. So, this will provide upgraded ADA ramps to the current standard and as well as shorten the crossing distance of all three legs, so both, both ways across Fifth Street and across Q Avenue. So, that'll provide better pedestrian safety for all pedestrians.
Perfect. Thank you.
Mayor Gear. Mayor Gear.
Ms. Moulton.
Thank you for that. That's great news, and I just wanted to confirm also that the bike parking structure will still remain as well.
Yep, that's correct. Bike shelter will stay exactly how it is, we're just gonna build around it.
Great. Well, it looks like it's gonna be an excellent improvement for all modes of transportation and the environment as well. So unless anyone has any further questions or discussions, I would move that the City Council authorize the mayor to sign Contract 21001 STM 002 with Valdez Construction in the amount of $403,928.27 to perform the City Hall Parking Lot LID retrofit project.
Second.
We have a motion by Ms. Moulton, a second by Mr. Young.
Mayor Gear.
Mr. Miller.
I did have just one slight concern on the contract, because I know plantings cost a lot of money, and I want to make sure that that's, take that into account when we take these trees out, because that's a great education point of how the bioswales work, is getting the right plantings in there. So I guess I didn't see it, and I see topsoil in the contract, but I don't see a lot of planting, so that's maybe something we can look at on the other end of the contract. But I can support it as it's written.
All right, thank you, Mr. Miller. Any other comments?
Mayor Gear.
Mr. Walters.
I think this is a great-looking project, and it has a lot of really nice features. I do really have a hard time supporting it because it's behind a building that I don't see has a future. Long-term, I don't see how we maintain City Hall. We've talked about this quite a few times, but never really at a level of detail where we could plan for what we look for in the next City Hall building. But now we're gonna spend more money on it. The cover memo for this project talks about this being a partnership with Puget Soundkeepers. Really what it is, is an obligation of our settlement agreement with Puget Soundkeepers. And I think we owe it to everyone to be very clear about that, and really the cover memo auto reflected that, because that's precisely what it is. So I'll vote for it because it's our contract obligation to do this project and because it's a good project. But we really ought to conceive of these things in ways that our long-term capital facilities plan can support with long-term planning for the buildings that they are going next to. And City Hall is, it has a number of problems we don't need to recount here, but also it has a substantial opportunity cost on our downtown because there's so much airspace that is inefficiently used by the City Hall building. There aren't that many people in it, but it takes up a lot of room. So long-term, we still have to have that conversation. I'll vote for this now. It's really against my better judgment because it's more, putting more money into a facility that doesn't have a long-term future.
Okay, any other comments? Ms. Hunt, we have a motion by Ms. Moulton, a second by Mr. Young. Would you call for the vote?
Mr. Walters?
Yes.
Ms. Cleveland McGrath?
Yes.
Ms. Moulton?
Yes.
Mr. McDougall?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Mayor Gear.
Mr. Young.
If I can, I just wanted to say one thing to Mr. Holman. I want to thank you for just the excellent presentations you bring and, you know, the hard work that I know you put into these things. And so I see that in what you do, I hear it in your voice as you're describing it, and I just want to acknowledge that and say thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Yeah, thank you, Tim. Appreciate you. All right. At this time, I'm going to adjourn the meeting, one of our shortest meetings, but we're back in session in person. We'll be here next Monday night, and we welcome the community to come back to City Council Chambers. Thank you. The meeting is adjourned.